Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the NACAL Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this Monday, November 17th, 2025. Could we start with the roll call, please?
Philalbon?
Here.
O'Clarity? Here. Enneagram? Here. Wright? McMahon? Here. Chair Maxwell? Here. Form question.
Thank you very much. Move to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by O'Clarity. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by McMahon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Move to the approval of the minutes from November 3rd, 2025. Again, if there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve. So moved. So moved by Philalbon. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by McMahon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the show. If there's anyone that has anything that would like to speak to me that is not on the agenda today, you may step forward. If not, we will move on to new business. We have a continued public hearing, a petition by Louis...
Poblet.
Poblet. Thank you. Petitioner at Newport Illinois Group LLC owner for an approval of a variance to the townhome development standards in Exhibit A of Ordinance 02-14 in order to reduce the 20-foot rear yard setback to 13 feet for a proposed four-unit mall... four-unit townhome on the vacant property located at 711 to 717 Woodbridge Court. Your presentation.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Louis Poblet. You and I have our time. So first of all, thank you for giving me the chance to explain about this very... and hopefully I can demonstrate to you guys that this is not about convenience or because we think we're special, but this is really, I believe, is a fair and reasonable and practical solution that I believe it's aligned with the city zoning ordinance. And so today we're asking for a variance to the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 13 feet. And the reason for this is that when this subdivision was first planned, the 20-foot setback was based on the assumption that each lot would be 88 feet deep. Our lot is only 80 feet deep, and it's the shallowest in... I think it's one of the shallowest in the entire subdivision. So because of this, sticking to the full 20-feet requirement would cut our buildable space by at least 700 feet squared. So this difference would require major changes on our floor plans and exterior designs and would create an awkward home that would not be aligned or would look like any of the homes around us. So what we would like to do instead is to build a four-unit townhome, similar model, similar size and dimensions as the existing homes from our neighbors. But because of our lot unique dimensions, we are unable to do so without the variance. So as this affects our neighbors behind us, on November 11, then also set up a meeting with our neighbor Carolyn, along with Dulcie, the property owner, and myself. And we walked through our plans and carefully considered Carolyn's concerns. At the end of the meeting, Carolyn expressed her support for the variance under the following conditions, which we agreed to. So number one, no decks will be permitted.
No decks?
No decks are going to be permitted. And we will have a paved patio with a maximum of three feet by three feet. Number two, we will plant a row of 10 arborvitide trees, at least six feet tall, for privacy, which we agree with. And three, we will remove the existing tree on the north line at the rear of the property, which is dead anyways. So we believe these are fair requests that help maintain privacy and keep the neighborhood appeal. And last... and, you know, so we are willing to do this for our neighbors, and I think this is something that would be beneficial for all of us. Now, lastly, my understanding is that the United Development Ordinance requires specific findings to grant a variance, so I'm going to name a few that I think are applicable. Number one, due to our lot being unusually shallow, a strict application of the zoning regulations would cause practical difficulty and hardship for the owner. Number two, sticking to the full setback would cut down the usable space and seriously affect the home's layout and value. Number three, this specific hardship is a result of the original subdivision plan and not from anything that the owners have done. Number four, we're not asking special privilege here. We just have an issue which other lots don't have, and this should not... this should not set a precedent as we are the only... one of the only ones with these unique dimensions for lots. We're just trying to make the lot usable in the same manner that everybody else is using it. Number five, there will be no negative impact from this variance. The home will match the scale, design, and character of surrounding properties. So to summarize this, we're asking for approval to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to 13 feet, and we believe this request fits the intent of the zoning rules, addresses the unique lot size issue, and doesn't negatively impact our neighbors or the public, and keeps the neighbors... the neighborhood look and character intact. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a staff report?
Yes. In your packets, as Louis mentioned, this is a variance request regarding the setback for a vacant lot in Wineberry, which is not too many left. This is Woodbridge Court. You see, the lot is subdivided. They're set up for four units like the other rest of the development. And the ordinance for Wineberry is from 2002, and in that ordinance, there was a development standard set. There was a plan approved, as you can see here, at single-family and maybe a townhome. And they had standards... well, it's hard to see, but up here, they had standards for a townhome in terms of setbacks front and side, next to streets, and they had a rear setback of 20 feet, but only for 88-foot depth of lots. This lot is 80 feet in deep. So as mentioned, this is an unusual lot in terms of size compared to the others. And you see here, Lot 4, all the lots are established, and the dash lines for the future units. This one is 80 feet in deep. All the others are 88 feet. I think there's a couple at 86. So it is unique. This lot is lower, not as much depth as the others. So this shows the rough area of the setback, because it's about 20 feet off the rear lot line. This is an area about 13 feet. This is a 20-foot wide area. It's owned by the Homeowners Association, the original developer, and the adjacent units to the north. It's a wide-out view, kind of showing Wineberry Drive and a couple of drive and all the townhomes. Here, as you can see, some of the open area between the lots is different depending on the area. This one over here, Sterling Court, kind of near Woodbridge Court, very close, not much setback here. See some close townhome units back here, and this is a lot here. This is the layout of the townhome. As mentioned, their townhome size is most of the same as the others. And it's 13 feet. That's the indication there. I'm seeing to the back edge of the townhome building. They originally had decks on the back, but those were removed. The additions as well discussed. So they want to reduce the setback by seven feet. Again, the lot depth is eight feet less than the other lots here, so that kind of corresponds to each other. And they're indicating, as Louis mentioned, that if we build it per the standards, it will lose square footage, be less on the value of the unit, would make it look different than the others. They just want to build the same size unit footprint as the other units. Note two, the ordinance from 2002 did require the elevations looked somewhere to what was approved in that ordinance. And the elevate... this is right across the court proposing units who look the same. This is some photos of the site. This is the flag of the foreground, shows the 20-foot, and you can see the red flag here, it has about 13 feet in weight. From the lot line, this is a unit to the north. As mentioned, we did meet with neighbor Carolyn Swafford, 3215 Napa Court, who's here tonight and wants to speak. Met out there regarding... showing her where the 20-foot setback is, where the 13-foot setback is, and the applicant is out there, too. We met and kind of discussed some possible conditions. One of them was removal of the decks in the back. As you can see here, those have been removed. As each unit, there's four units that come out, there is a three-by-three landing, paved landing, kind of patio, which is important for them. That's what they're proposing. They also are proposing 10 arborvitide trees here, same in shape, area of screen, at a minimum of six foot height, and also remove an existing tree on the... looks like the lot... sorry about that. This tree here, I think it's on the lot line or maybe on the common area, and they're going to plant a new two-and-a-half-inch caliber tree, which they showed in this area. So those are the three conditions that were discussed for... so we believe they meet the findings technically with a lot depth. That's a hardship, because a lot is narrower than the other lots. And if they conform to the standards, it would create a unit that would be smaller than the others, look different, and be less bad. In terms of public input, as mentioned, received an email and form that's in your packets from Carolyn Swafford noting objecting to that. And we met with her out at the site, and I think she's going to speak tonight on kind of her thoughts regarding the conditions in the revised plan. Also, we received a form, 3213 Napa Court. She's right behind there, too. So the two neighbors who submitted letters live right here, live right here, most impacted. Vicki indicated support if a landscape screening was added between Woodbridge and the original townhome. We also received helpful letters in favor of the variance from CBP Group LLC, they own the lot at 3216 Sonoma Court. It's over here. And also from Ali Marzoc, M-A-R-Z-Z-O-U-K, from 685 Blackstone Court. He noted support for the variance also. And then over the weekend, we made copies for the commission, public response forms from Lori Spray, 3031 Wineberry Drive, and Kathleen Paralongo, 3235 Wineberry Drive, support. I've got some questions on that. The request, which I responded to, they wanted to know if this variance would apply to the other vacant lots next door over here, and they would not. This is a variance just for this lot. There's some variance requests for these. They have to be a public hearing, notification to the surrounding owners. So it only applies to this lot. Yes, about the homeowners association, the applicant, and they have to get that approval. That's not enforced by the city. They're not party to those agreements. And I noted the depth of the lots was the reason for the variance request. They also mentioned... that's the aesthetics of it, so I went into the background of those and made sure they were there, too. So I believe those neighbors are in attendance, and I don't know if they're going to speak, but I did address those letters back to them. So we recommend approval. We think it beats the variance request hardship, particularly for lot depth, and we just want to build a townhome unit that is similar to the other ones in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Dan. We do have one speaker request for Carolyn Swafford?
Yes.
Get on the panel, Karen. Get a member over, please.
I live at 3215 Napa Court, which is one of the middle units. And I appreciate what the petitioner has offered to change in the plan. I just feel that long-term, it will affect the unit, my unit, and the other three units' market value negatively. So that's all I'd say.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up for comments and questions from I have to quote nothing other than I'm just curious. You said that there'll be no decks in the back, but is there not a second-story sliding glass door in that... in those models?
No. No, it's all on the set top. Excuse me, I'm speaking because I'm a realtor, so I've shown these places. I just showed 3213, actually, over the weekend. But it's on the main level, so you just go right onto the deck or patio.
Yeah, here's the rear elevation, lot elevation.
Oh, gotcha. I thought it was the front.
Yeah.
So it'll be a little bit slanting.
Sure.
It's a front elevation.
It does seem geographically like it's in the middle of a lot of those lots, too, so I think that that's kind of an awkward position to...
Yeah. Yeah, I have more concerns about why it was plotted that way in the first place, because it's... I mean, it's setting itself up for all of these problems.
Yeah, there was no standard for 80-foot depth lots in terms of the rear setback. There's nothing on there. Just listed the ones for 80.
Was that across the board? Because we saw you that a lot of them aren't, and they're almost like touching when you were flipping through.
Yeah, the rear... I think that common area between them is where it's quite different. You can see, this is owned by the original developer association. So it's here, here's about 60-foot wide, 60 here, but you see here, it's very close.
Yeah, there's nothing.
This is the angle of the street. These are pretty close, too. You know, you've got some variety in there. But all of them do on that individual lot, do meet that... should meet that 20-foot setback. Now, decks can be added if they don't meet that. There's a percentage coverage of the rear yard that's asking you to care, too, which this lot will adhere to then also. But you can see, there is quite a variety, and they just never really accommodated or addressed that shorter length of lot.
The other lot that's out there that's not developed, Dan, 721, 720 through 723, how big are... how deep are those lots?
They should be, I believe, 88... I think there's a couple 86s, which is this lot here to the north.
Any other questions, comments?
Did you notice when you purchased...
No. Didn't know any of those. Just found out.
Until you asked for the permit.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, it does seem like it's able to make it hard on this investment, maybe? I think they worked with the neighbors. You did meet with the neighbors?
Yes, and we do want to build the same model home, so if we vary from that, then that would...
Then you have a different... people driving by are going to see something.
Yes, and that will not only affect us, but also the values of the neighbors' homes, too, you know, because now you get this different home, this subdivision.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I will ask for...
I have a question. Is it possible to share a little bit about... I'm sorry, I'm a resident over at 3207 Napa, so I'm...
I'm sorry, can you just come forward and say your name? On the record?
Michelle Pickett. I'm a resident at 3207 Napa Court, and I was just asking if you could share a little bit about the feedback that was received from the residents and the homes that were... that provided feedback.
Yeah, I went through those. You want me to summarize the feedback?
Yeah, you could.
Vicki Hayes, 3213 Napa Court, she's right behind. Initially objected to the variance request, they indicated landscape screening was added. Once it was added, if it was added, she would be generally like to see that in favor of it. Carolyn Swafford, 3215 Napa Court, this spoke. We see two letters in support, CBP Group LLC, they own the lot at 3216 Sonoma Court. We also received a public response form and the supporting request from Ali Marzoc, 685 Blackstone Court. They just indicated support. They didn't have any additional information. And then they received over the weekend the response forms from Lori Spray, 3031 Wineberry Drive, Kathleen Paralongo, 3235 Wineberry Drive, support, but had some questions, which I just went through and addressed. That would...
Dan, can you pull up that one picture with all the yellow lines on there? I just wanted to see if I'm understanding this right, the bigger one with the whole subdivision? Because there's certain places, like I see where, like if you look at 3240 to 3237 up...
What street?
Keep going up, up to the right.
To the right.
Right, those two there. So the piece... the piece of pie that's in the middle, the homeowners association owns it, it takes care of that. So that piece varies depending upon how the HOA originally was set up there. So like, that 3240 to 3237, what's the distance? They both have that 20-foot setback rule?
On their lot.
On their lot.
And you've got a little...
So those two houses could be 40 feet apart plus that little triangle that's in the middle?
Yeah.
About 45 feet?
Which is very narrow, you know.
So it doesn't... it doesn't look like you're asking for anything, like, you're not asking for the houses, the townhomes at 715 to be any closer than what's going to happen to 3215 than what's over at 1240 and 1237?
Yeah, and down here, too, on Sterling Court, these are pretty close. They meet the setbacks on their lot, but this open area, common area is very narrow here.
Yes.
It's about 20 feet here, 60 here. It's very generous, but you can see it is... it does vary.
I don't believe... yes.
Yeah, so I don't... I think the bigger... the bigger drawback on the neighborhood, if he had to buy... build a smaller house to meet the setbacks, then it would be... I think that would detract from the value of the neighborhood as opposed to this, because what we're asked... we're being asked to approve is, can he build something that's going to be as close as some of the other ones? It's just that one lot line there. So that being said, if I'm understanding this right, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't...
It's a right way to look at it. It's very... It's distance between townhomes.
Okay.
So just... I mean, it's kind of moot at this point, but when this all got laid out, planning and zoning approved this layout, or was that kind of back to the developer that chucked it up?
No, this is approved by the city council and at that time in early 2000s through the commissions. This was the approved preliminary plan with all the development standards on the top. You can't see it, it laid out all the setbacks, all the standards, fees, single-family, broken-down townhomes, broken-down with the setbacks. It just didn't capture this...
That's the lot.
Is it... the note here, about the 20 feet typically specifically says for 88-foot...
Yeah, no, it's...
88-foot, not most likely.
Okay. If there are other questions or comments, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I can make a motion. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the variance to the townhome development standards in Exhibit A of Ordinance 02-14 in order to reduce the 20-foot rear setback to a 13-foot... 13 feet for a proposed four-unit town on the vacant lot located at 711-717 Woodbridge Court, as shown on Exhibit A, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no decks will be allowed, and the rear yards, paved patios slash landings will be approved at a maximum of three feet by three feet and constructed per the city's building code. Number two, plant a line of 10 operative trees, minimum of six feet tall, along the rear, that's the north lot line. Number three, remove the existing tree on the north lot line and replace with a new deciduous tree, minimum of two-and-a-half inches of caliber.
So moved by McMahon. May I have a second? Second. Still going to mess up your name. I'm sorry. Seconded by Philalbon.
It's pretty heavy.
Yes, could I get a roll call, please?
Philalbon?
Yes.
O'Clarity? Yes. Enneagram? Yes. McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Second item we have on our agenda tonight is preliminary slash final development plan and final plat... approval of a preliminary final development plan and final plat for a warehouse and distribution facility at the northeast corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive, Midwest... Project Midwest, Morticale LLC.
Hello, my name is Gary Horn. I'm with Mort Capital out of Dallas, Texas. We're requesting approval for the development of a million-square-foot warehouse development in the northeast corner of Peace and Fairview. It's for a national tenant that we represent. We built five buildings for them throughout the country, so it's a fairly typical build for us. The building will be expandable to a million five, Class A 32-foot clear warehouse building. Fairly straightforward, multiple trailer parks that serve the facility, secure. We're going to do a new entrance off of Peace Road with a security gate there, and the entire property will be fenced and landscaped per code.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a staff report?
As mentioned, this is a project that we saw last year, Project Midwest, it was annexed, rezoned, recommended, approved by the commission, and a concept plan was approved. Northeast corner of Fairview and Peace, 147 acres, approximately. You can see the proposed building here and expansion. The proposed initial building is just over a million square feet warehouse and distribution facility with an expansion. No timeframe on the expansion yet. The concept plan approved last year at 1.3 million square foot and a little bit less additions, so they're with under the max square footage of the entire building with the addition. So that agreement last year required a final plan, preliminary plan, and a final plan to be submitted, reviewed by the commission and the city council. And the plans would include engineering, a landscape plan, building elevation and lighting plan, which you would receive. That's the landscape plan. You can see the landscape being along Peace Road, Fairview Drive, and throughout the site also sample building elevations of the building. And that was a plan that was approved with the concept plan last year. So you can see it's general, same location and same size. As mentioned, the... a little bit about the traffic or the access to the property. They use the access, the future access where the cost of being... They use the access, the future access where the cars have been coming drive, change the signal configuration, of course. They're adding a right turn in only, northbound of Peace Road, southbound they're adding left turn in to the site. That'll be the main traffic, truck traffic on the site. South of the building off Fairview, they have the employee visitor parking area. And then they have emergency truck access, emergency area for trucks on Fairview, too, but that'll be gated. The main access will be on Peace Road, all the trucks basically. As you can see, they have the large amount of truck parking, two detention ponds here in the future building, and also has future truck parking areas and the future detention area. This area all over here in green will be returned back into farming. There's no buildings proposed anywhere near that area. If there's some expansion in the future, they'll have to come back and amend the ordinance in a hearing. So the plan meets the general layout of the site that was approved. All the utilities are to the site. Sanitary is already along Fairview. They're going to extend it actually all the way across the frontage of Peace Road to serve this site and the future properties to the north. And sanitary are exists on the north side of Fairview. Water is on the west side of Peace, they'll extend that under Peace Road, connect to the building. Stormwater, you can see the detention ponds down there. You see the stormwater management plan, which was reviewed by a city engineer. The plat itself is a one-lot subdivision, which includes appropriate easements and the dedication of some right away from the centerline of Fairview and Webster Roads. So the preliminary final plan and plat are substantial compliance with the approved concept plan and all the standards in that agreement. So we recommend approval, and there's a sample motion that approves. The plans are listed in Exhibit A.
Thank you, Dan. Any comments or questions from the commission? Oh, did someone want to...
I think there's, not a hearing, but one of the neighbors wanted to ask a question. Ask a question.
I guess I just want to kind of voice my opinion at this time. It's kind of a done deal, but do I need to stand?
If you would.
You can, it's probably good hearing.
Yeah, I'm just saying, say your name.
I'll introduce myself. My name is Lynn Ferris. My husband, John Ferris, and I live in that little corner that's, that's cut out. I just want to give a little history of our situation. We've lived in our house approximately 35 years. We used to live on the east side of DeKalb. We, I'm property owned, which was initially, or at one time, we sold our house to the federal government when the DeKalb airport expanded. So we needed to move. This property was the original homestead of Webster Farm. It was owned by a guy named Jerry Deacon, and he sold us the property. We had to go to the county board to get a variance to build on that land. And we have basically just lived there. I'm concerned about this plot, just some of the things, like for example, this morning I look out my backyard and I've got a huge berm behind my house. It looks like it's not very far, but I don't know if that's going to stay there or not. And it's just like, we're like sitting ducks out here, you know, with nothing. This afternoon, this morning, no trespassing signs came up. And it looked like they said no trespassing, like we were not to trespass on the property, not that we would. This afternoon, the signs got changed, and it says, no, the signs are now facing us so that we can go, they can go on their property, but don't trespass on our property. So every day, there's just something happening. And when you're just a private citizen, you know, we have no recourse here. You know, we, they, we have never talked to them. I, I emailed this man, but I've never seen him in person. And it's like, if you were in that situation, what do you do? You know, you have big business coming in, and we have no recourse on what, what we can do. You know, I mean, it's really up to them. I'm just kind of voicing my opinion as to when you approve these things, what happens to private citizens? I mean, I don't live in the city of DeKalb, so I have no recourse with you either, but just so you understand what happens when this comes in and we're sitting there doing nothing. And they've never offered to buy our house or anything. They're just going to build right around it. So just, just giving you an idea of what life's like when big business comes in, so thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I sent you an email.
Yes.
I mean, we're, you know, we're developers. I mean, we came of area prime for development, and all the rest of the land around, around this area is for sale. One data center comes in, they could buy it all. I mean, it's just a matter, just a matter of time. We knew that we didn't need 147 acres, so we've always planned on having green space on the other side and buffering that property as much as possible. We have no intention of developing it. As a matter of fact, the land goes with the lease, so, and we're, we'll set up a farmer to farm that land, you know, going forward, so. And the landscaping plan, we've got additional trees on that side to buffer as much as possible. The dirt is just being piled right now, it'll end up being, you know, nice flat cornfield.
But for three years, they've never farmed it. It's nothing but weeds.
We bought it from 3M.
3M never farmed it.
They need to maintain it.
Believe me, I know, because after we bought the property, every farmer in Illinois has called me, well, they can farm that land. So, you know, we told them we were...
Last fall, when the thistles dried up, it looked like it was snowing. That's how bad the thistles are.
Yeah.
The thistles are there again now, it's going to do the same thing. All this green area, are they going to farm that or just let it grow weeds?
You know, they're going to farm it, yeah. So we'll, we'll set up a farmer, and then we'll have a, because we want to maintain our property load, too. So to farm that land, they're going to have to maintain both property loads. We'll put it in the agreement with them.
I just note, too, the, it's quite a distance here, about 850 feet to the future truck parking area. There is some additional landscape. This lot itself is surrounded by evergreen trees, very, a lot of evergreen trees right around the property. So the developer can't go on your property, can't trespass or anything. They're going to farm that, so no future buildings will be in this area. They try to expand down the road, any truck loading or parking further to the east, they'll have to amend the ordinance and come back in for a new period of feedback from anybody within 350 feet of the site. So the concept plan was approved last year, so this plan does match that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate your predicament, but I guess you're going to be surrounded by farm fields eventually anyway, so.
I hope so, because for the last three years, it's been a mess, so. And I'm concerned, I guess, about trespassing. I know you mentioned tonight there was fencing, but, you know, it's always, when you have ponds and things, as years goes on, people always think they need to fish in there or whatever, so there could be additional trespassing issues, too. So, again, we're like sitting ducks. You know, you build a house out in the country, and then this comes in, and we have really nothing we can do about it.
Well, and maybe I'm wrong, but again, if there's fencing all the way around the entire complex, the only way they can get to those ponds is through...
If there is fencing. I did not know that until tonight. I heard there was no fencing. I heard it was just going to be trees. But if there's fencing, fine. And all the ponds are in the fencing, that's fine.
I was going to say, hopefully, there's a little bit more peace of mind if you know that now. Okay, any other comments, questions?
Question, I mean, is, so is there going to be fencing? You've heard, yes.
There's going to be fencing, but fencing is inside the tunnels.
Inside, no, no.
Yeah.
The fencing is around the...
Around the trucks.
So there is no fencing.
Not fencing.
But just like any other site, if there's trespassing, then the owner can look by.
I know, just kind of promotes it.
There's a lot of open areas, even the big developments south of Gaygate where a servant could try to trespass.
Anything else?
So the, that, the odd shape there was not annexed then.
No.
It was not part of the animal plan.
That was the original site of the farm. It was the Webster, Webster Farm.
And you were able to build without...
By 48 acres.
Because of the airport situation, basically.
We had to go to the county and get a special permit.
Yeah. I mean, normally you would not be able to have built there, but they did give us a variance because of the situation we were in earlier, but so.
Okay, anybody else? Not? Okay, we'll ask for a motion.
I'll do it if I can find it. Thank you.
Philippi has got us covered.
I move, planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the preliminary final development plan and final plat for a 1,019,343 square foot warehouse and distribution facility with a 524,417 square foot future expansion located at the northeast corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive. Earth plans and plat noted in Exhibit A of the staff report and subject to all staff comments being addressed prior to the issuance of building permit and recording of the final plat.
So moved by Fallbaum, may I have a second?
I want to make a comment. What we have to do here is we have to abide by, instead of being support, you need to tell your story as next week at city council. This comes up next week.
Well, the council looking the same thing. Does this final plan match the concept plan in terms of, we already said we annexed this, we agreed to development standards.
I just don't like, well, they, they look at somebody, yeah.
They certainly do.
We understand that our housing value have just completely dropped. I mean, we are retired, and that was basically retirement income. Now you're going to have, try to sell a house eventually, what's your market value of your house? You know, we've got a...
They're certainly going to get to the council, anybody can...
So this, at this, at this thing here, our job is to make sure, Dan, it's on this finding of tax code and our procedures here. It's the council, the elected officials of the city of DeKalb.
They just need to understand the future when this happens. You know, I mean, what, what is our recourse? You know, I, yeah, housing value just completely dropped. You know, we had a nice house in the country, now who's, who's going to buy it? You know, so.
And the comprehensive plan is industrial for this property, and properties to the east here. So this is the area, future industrial expansion in our comprehensive plan, which we went through quite extensively a few years ago.
When you're one person, it's very hard to argue, you know, so.
Understood. But to his point, I mean, we knew that this was commercial property.
I don't think when we built our house 35 years ago, it wasn't commercial property. I think it was farmland. I don't know. I don't know for sure.
It was either commercial industrial for a long time.
You think so? I don't remember it being that, but I, I'm not going to argue with that, I don't know.
That being said, I'll have a second, the motion on the floor.
Seconded by McMahon. Vocal?
Fallbaum?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penny Graham?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. As nervous as I was.
The city council is ready.
Okay, staff report for next week, or next meeting?
Next meeting on summer first, bag of library, two hearings, a tax amendment, then a special use application to allow you to shelter 220 college avenue. And then a project vector, multi-phase data center annexation, rezoning, concept plan approval. It's project basically stopping that, so we'll go to 220. That night, at the last council meeting on the 10th, they did approve the property and solar farm, which permission, approved that, we think.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Moved on, Jordan.
Moved by McMahon.
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All the members say aye.
Aye.
All vote, same sign.